Yeah.
Yeah.
Here's some more paper, Joe.
Here's some more paper, Joe.
It's great.
Hey, I can help.
It's double sided.
Is there another copy?
Uh, yeah.
Here semester, if you need one.
I need twelve.
Oh, you need twelve, okay.
All right. Cross order. Salute and appla.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Caprio?
Here.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Fawnin?
Uh, here.
We're sorry. Councilor Fucy?
Here.
Councilor Hodgson?
Here.
Councilor Rose?
Here.
Okay. I'd like to welcome our new councillor, Dr. Doctor.
Thank you.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for our previous town council meeting, item A, May twenty, two thousand fourteen?
Okay, second, but there's one thing that... On page four, halfway down, they appointed Anthony Esposito to the police commission. Are you going to the minutes or should?
No, I just asked you.
Yeah, it should be Andrew.
It should be Andrew Esposito, at the bottom of the page.
Okay. Moved by councillor Diamond, seconded by deputy mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Upstain.
Councilor Caprio?
Upstain.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Hodgson?
Upstain.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Water pollution control authority agenda, item three, correspondence citizen statements, item four, unfinished business, item five, new business, item A, extension of sanitary sewers to Route eighty, Fowler Road, Sierra Road.
Good evening. Well, I've included your agenda packet, it's basically a memo with some older memorandums that were done in two thousand eight and two thousand nine. When we talked at the May meeting, the WPCA meeting, we talked about the potential extending sanitary sewers along Route eighty, along the Route eighty corridor, in the area Fowler Road, Sierra Road, and then possibly further west. And I told you, I give you a little background information, just sort of some food for thought, there's nothing happening right now, but basically, you know, the concern or the consideration was, is there a way to get sanitary sewers along Route eighty to enhance and promote some development? Basically, a little history, the Village of Nacho project was approved, I believe, by the WPCA in around two thousand seven, which it was approved for a two hundred seventy unit, age restricted, fifty-five and older apartment type complex. And it went through the P and Z process and the like, and it ultimately got P and Z approval to be built, and the economy did what it did, and it's sort of been languishing at this point. They're currently doing some grading work that the Plains zoning commission gave the developer permission to do, in sort of preparation for the project, and there is an indication that they still want to move ahead. The indication also is that they probably coming back for some type of potential modification or reconfiguration of the proposed development based upon market conditions and the like. So, that's where that stands. But one of the things that was looked at as part of that was a way to get sanitary sewers further east towards our industrial zone areas of Fowler Road, Sierra Road, and along Route eighty, including the commercial areas. What was included in the approved plan, the WPCA approved, was to basically put a twelve-inch gravity sanitary sewer line at maximum depth through the development by the developer to get it out to Fowler Road, and then if and when the town ever wanted to extend from there, we could take that on in the future. The developer came back and had cost considerations, and there were some preliminary discussions with the WPCA back in two thousand eight and two thousand nine, and it really hasn't gone anywhere at this point. They were looking to possibly either decrease some of their costs by maybe raising the sanitary sewer line, or looking for some cost sharing consideration by the WPCA. That's still out there, there is no final decision on that, and again, I anticipate them coming back in. So, that's where that project stands. The other issue, the question is, how far can we go on Route eighty if we're heading east? And basically, we can get pretty much to Guilford Line by gravity if we go at maximum depth, you know, based on the preliminary information I looked at. Whether we go through this development, or whether we go acquire an easement from Brookmead Apartments, out to Route eighty and just go down Route eighty, they're both doable. I mean, there's, I haven't cost anything out, there's a lot of considerations. We got some deep sewers in there, and I'm, I, either way you look at it, they're, you know, they're not easy projects. You have up to twenty-five feet, twenty-five foot cuts if you go by gravity in some areas, and some areas may be along Route eighty, where you'd be faced with that kind of cut. So, there's definitely cost considerations that have to be looked at, but again, physically, it appears to be doable.
It does make it. Because I was told within the seventies that they had it all laid out to work gravity, yeah.
That was the plan, and then back in the seventies, there was money coming in, and pretty much everybody was looking at sewer in a lot of areas in towns, and then it got cut back in the later seventies when federal money dried up. I mean, back then, it was a ninety percent funding for sanitary sewers, so a lot of projects happened, and that's when our projects happened in town, the bulk of them. So, anyway, that can hap, it can happen, it's just a matter, I said, the developer will probably come back in the near future to try to discuss some of that further with the WPCA, and I just want to give you some food for thought, so you have some of the background. The other issue too is, we did, when Branford upgraded their sanitary sewer treatment plant back in nineteen ninety-six, they asked us basically how much capacity we wanted in the system. We went round and round, and I did some different analysis, but we basically asked them for five hundred thousand gallons per day on the annual average basis for capacity. That basically takes care of what we have, the sewer properties, and including this Nacho village that ever happens, the ones that front on the sanitary sewers, plus some additional connections along the way. Currently, we discharge about three hundred twenty thousand gallons per day average. So, there's, there's definitely quite a bit of capacity, but we can't certainly service the whole eastern end of town. I mean, the corridor is probably something that we can handle.
Down to the Cumberland Farms, pretty much?
Pardon?
Down to the Cumberland Farms?
We can go, we can go past there.
Okay.
I mean, flows, sewer usage, it's not what it used to be, it's not manufacturers that... There aren't big water users anymore. If you ask the water authority, they'll tell you that right away. I mean, they're, they're not putting out the water they used to in the past. And that number is almost exactly, I look back when I did that study back in nineteen ninety-six, we're using about the same amount of flow per day now as we did close to twenty years ago. I mean, so, we haven't added, we've added a few connections along the way, no real big major ones, but we've added some along the way, but it hasn't changed much.
What about the car, the car wash?
Well, that's, that's on the septic system.
Kurt, did we have any sewers out that way at all?
Basically, Brookmead is served by sanitary sewers in the back, they come through that easement through there. That's the limit, it doesn't, nothing comes out to Route eighty over at that point.
But nothing else is?
No, and then on Route twenty-two, we basically come up to the, the Old Town Hall is served off of Route twenty-two by the cemetery, and the gas station is served, and that's the limit there.
So, is that where we would tie in if we were to go gravity, or?
I mean, if we tie in, it would either be Fowler Road, if the development ever, you know, comes out and brings it out to that point, or from Brookmead, we have condos. There's a big trunk line in that was put in for future planning at that point in the late seventies, I think it's an eighteen inch line, it was put there, it was put deep enough with the plan of going east. I don't know if there's an easement all the way out to Route eighty, but physically, the line is at the depth it should be, you know, there.
So, I mean, thinking, I guess the question is, do we want to wait, I mean, in a bad economy for a developer to develop that, or do we want to just go straight down Route eighty and attack it that way? I mean, we're kind of done what we're thinking about doing here, I guess, right?
Well, the big issue is cost. Everybody will tell you they want sewers. We actually looked at it when, back, I don't know if you remember, when Eastern Press was there, they wanted sanitary sewers, and we looked at the potential extending them there. Cost was high, and we sent out notices, and we told all the budding property owners and estimated what they'd have to, you know, pay, and there wasn't as mu, there wasn't much interest at that point because of the high cost of it.
It's too bad we didn't do it, we did section one.
Again, it was done initially in the seventies, there was a lot of free money, that was the time. It's when every, someone has to pay for it, whether the, you know, town has to kick in something, or, and the properties to be served, they have to be assessed, you know, at some, you know, at some share of it.
Have you found a lot, a lot of inquiries about doing it along that route, right? A lot of them.
I have, I've had some, I mean, both, both people are dealing with it, you know, there's certainly properties along the Fowler Road, Sierra Road, Route eighty area that there's a high water table, and then...
What about one thirty-nine?
Oh, one thirty-nine is sewed.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that's...
Well, the probability of that Nacho project going through, since it's been sitting there for five years, doesn't look too good.
Well, and I can't, I can only tell you what the developers told, you know, us, Plains zoning and engineering, that, that, they're sort of waiting the market to do something a little better than that, yeah, because when it got approved, it was really at the time that everything just crashed, and nothing happened, so. But anyway, that's sort of some food for thought, and I'm certainly here, you know, any questions, or if you think of something down the way, I can get you some information. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, citizen statements and petitions. Okay, regular town council meetings. Item seven, reports of committees, boards, and commissions, economic development commission, proposed joint meeting, June second.
You know, I, my comments, I mean, I did get all, a lot of us there last night, it was great turnout, I thought it was a good meeting, and a lot of information was, was shared, a lot of good questions, so overall, I mean, I hope you agree, I thought it was very productive, I thought it was very informative, and we've got some direction in terms of where to go, and some research to do with respect to the parcel, but all in all, I think it's moving forward, and I think there was a general consensus to take the next step.
Mike, what is our contract with that consultant? What do we, what do we agree to pay him, and how much money do we owe him to complete his work?
We did pay him the, I can't remember the exact numbers, but we paid the deposit, and then upon completion...
It was about thirteen thousand dollars, I think that'd be.
It was thirteen or fifteen thousand dollars.
I'm sure it was thirteen, because we were...
And that's to get us to a, a, for a plan that we can go out for a request or proposal?
Exactly, right, so, the beginning, an issue to run the public meetings, the shreds, and then to, to come up with a final proposal that, that would be able to have input.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Item B, permanent project building committee.
They meet next Monday on June ninth.
Item C, BOE Town Council Communication Subcommittee, they have not met, I think time and typically, they'll be scheduling a meeting over the next week or so.
Yeah, they're scheduled for, our regular scheduled meeting is the second Monday, which would be next Monday, the ninth. The BOE has canceled the last two months, so hopefully, this one will go through.
Mayor, I'd like to bring your, I covered the COD meeting for Anthony last week, and I had Mike send out, pass around the shared service operation study for the South Center region, and there's a lot of good sharing here, I wanted you to just go over to see if anything the town in Nacho could use, because there's a lot of interesting things. They seem to think if they share, if a town shared doing things, that it'd be a lot better, a lot cheaper for us, so I'd like you to take a look at that and see what you think. I also sent around a, using nature to reduce climate and disaster risk, just for information, and state historic preservation office grant information and the training sessions that they're holding.
Thank you. Item eight, town managers report, item A, community center update.
Yeah, the community center is moving along, the next item is the lights, the bids are out, will be opened on June ninth, so we'll have something to report for the permanent project building committee on that, that night.
Item B, Route eighty, DOT.
Yeah, I'd defer to Kurt, I mean, Kurt and I were out there to, to meet with the officials along with representative Candelaure and DOT officials about the buttoning up and addressing some of the issues in short form. We actually ended up doing an extensive, well, not extensive, but site walk, walking as far, you know, as thirty-nine and looking at various aspects that we had to look at, but I'll let Kurt speak to the specifics on it.
Yeah, and just briefly, as Mike said, representative Candelaure was there, Mike was there, Framarol, myself, and the DOT resident inspector. The biggest focus was on final, what's it look like? I mean, this, the emphasis was, we made, and this was all through the design process, it's, this is Main Street north Branford, and our issues were trees, basically, the turf establishment. If you look along Church Street, along that way, there's some trees, and they basically have a crown vetch, and it's low maintenance, no maintenance, and those are the things that Franny was pointing out, that along, if you look along Gray Hill Road, there's some trees, but the type of vegetation, the understory, the grass and everything, is gonna, it's unsightly, and the concern is it's gonna be a long-term maintenance headache for the town. I mean, and again, we're trying to make sure that everything's dressed up, low maintenance, and doesn't burden the town with long-term responsibilities of maintenance of what's left. The rock wall up by Gray Hill Road, and the concern is there's still a lot of rocks falling, and then that's, the DOT has turned it back to designers and tried to come up with some type of solution, because it's a long-term maintenance headache, all that rock keeps falling down into a swale that they built, and it's something that we're gonna have to mow along Gray Hill Road, and it's not acceptable from a, from a town point of view. Something that has to be done to make sure that it's, doesn't put that long-term burden on it.
And safe there, well?
Absolutely. And, but again, I said, the biggest emphasis, this is Main Street north Branford, this is what you see, this is what people remember north Branford, and we're trying to do something with a center, so the final product is very important. Where that rock wall is, we were shown a big planting plan originally, and it's not gonna happen, but there's something that has to happen to try to soften that, and that's what we're, we're pushing on. So, with that, we made our, our point to the DOT person, he's gonna try to get the landscaping people back out there on some of that, and with the state rep, we have another little push on the other end to try to not just deal with the DOT bureaucrats, try to get a little push from the other side. So, that's been the big push.
And that pop hole on Route eighty, like right up to the fridge?
Yep. I, I, so I have it marked now, because that's been, there's some transitions there, and then there's some things where the water company did, or the gas company did, that they're responsible for, so they have definitely been brought out to DOT. In addition, if you look on, turning it, if you're eastbound on Route eighty, and you turn into south on one thirty-nine, that radius is getting run over by vehicles, and the long-term, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be a problem.
Right. Go right over the sidewalk up onto the...
They're, they're, they're basically, you can look through there, as soon as they touch it up, there was tracks right through it.
Yeah, they sprayed the grass a couple hours later, there's tracks through there.
Exactly, exactly, and then when we went out there, that's what we saw, so that was brought out, that something has to be, something has to happen.
What's the status of Church Street opening?
Church Street, that's tied into the phone company having the splice wires, and according to DOT, there's three months of splicing, and...
Just in that area?
Just, just, right along that, that portion of Route eighty, the Church Street area. They were supposed to be there in November, and then they just, AT&T has not responded well. I think the last meeting, I said they should be out there at the end of that week, and I haven't seen anybody yet, but they said it's two to three months worth of splicing. So, we're trying to push, DOT is certainly trying to push, and, but that, that's the big holdup right there, so, because we'd like to open it up as well, I mean, it just, it's been a long time.
And there was one other issue that representative Candelaure brought to our attention and to DOT, was that the water issue further up Gray Hill Road was coming, in terms of water runoff, so that, that's gotta be addressed as well, and this was something that's not insignificant as well. I added that to the list.
And I know the firehouse apron on the driveway from the fire department, they had to address that.
There's that, and there's a hydrant that the water authority has to lower right in front of the, the firehouse, and it's been...
And I guess there's not too much they can do at that entrance at Central Plaza?
No, they're gonna do something with a sign, there is something that, there's some adjustments that they did say they're ongoing with rights-of-way people and the Plaza owner to try to make that a better situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item C, temporary part-time coverage for building, engineering, and planning and zoning.
Yes, well, as you know, Carol Zeb had unexpectedly taken retirement, and so thus there's a, there's a, an issue with coverage there in the building department. Now, it comes on the heels of the ZEO Bud Dekia retiring as well. The ad is closed, and we have interviews set for the ZEO on Monday, so there are three candidates who will interview, and hopefully be able to get someone on board with the ZEO relatively soon. However, with Carol's departure, you know, trying to cover and get coverage for various boards and commissions, I've got to rely on Kurt to handle the administrative tasks in that area, to pick up the slack. So, in order to try and give Kurt some relief to do that, he brought to me an idea and concept of bringing a former employee, Art Perry, back on a temporary, part-time basis, thirty, sixty days, just to have a body in there who can do field inspections, markouts, things of that nature, that would keep or allow Kurt some, some time to handle the issues that we need to is, take care of with legal notices, agendas, and correspondence, and things like that. As, of course, we go through, pending your approval of the job description for the planner, it's just a minor language change, we'll get that out on the street and pursue the town planner position, but just looking for coverage essentially.
My question, Mike, would be, it's good that we, we get somebody in here to pick up the slack, to, to free up Kurt, so we could pitch in, because I think with the things that we're going forward, it's very important to get the right person in Carol's position. I mean, that's a pretty big loss, losing her, and, not to say we don't want to be in a hurry, but I think you gotta get the right person for that job, that's just my feeling, so if we could get some people in here, or a person in here, like you said, to help out in the interim and keep things moving, I think that's, in my opinion, would be a step in the right direction, you know?
Mike, did Art Perry do zoning enforcement actions, too?
I don't believe, I may be wrong, but I don't believe he did, he was just more of the engineering aspect.
He was the engineering assistant, and in fact, and I think it was two thousand ten, when the budget got real tight, the position was tough, and he felt that, but he actually worked, I think, six or seven years in that position, and my thought was, I'd try to pick up the Plains zoning and weapons slack, and then try to keep that part of it going, there's a lot of field work, but like, you know, my thought was, you know, four or five days a week, you know, maybe four hours a day, or, just to be in there and, and help office, because he knows the routine, that, that's the biggest thing. We get an unknown person in, or spend all we're doing is trying to train someone, if you have somebody that knows the office procedure, and building, and totally, he'll actually help sort of...
I have no problem with it.
We're gonna have to sort of dig out a little bit, because Carol is on the spectrum, so there's things that are languishing there that have to be gone through, and if I was to be, I think Art Perry, because he knows the office already, would be able to...
I have no, I have no problem with him, I just wanted to know if he was willing to do it.
Is he available and willing to do it? Yeah, well, I talked to him, you know, first thing, because again, our thought was, somebody that could just sort of step in and...
Help out.
And, and do something, and we don't, just decide some of the investments out, what we're looking for, somebody to be out in the field, I wish we have a Chance Farm subdivision or something like that, we have to keep an eye on that, so that, that requires time, and there's, there's a lot of other things that, that was our thought, that's sort of best, in the end, or at least it uses a, you know, body, or a worthwhile body to do something, to keep it moving forward.
Is he willing to do it on a part-time basis?
Yeah, yeah, you know, he said he...
He's available, he could start right off. I mean, we could effectively start this, Thursday, pending, you know, that the council approves, consensus that this is okay to go and move forward, but, but again, on a part-time, temporary...
What, will he be paid by the hour, or?
We'd have to, I have to talk with him about that, but I think it's, it's gonna be well within what we have in terms of, you know, the market and where we have...
What we have for Bud Dekia's job?
Yeah, well, he wouldn't have Bud's job, because we'd be replacing that one, but it'd be something similar to that rate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you say that you had a couple of people that were applying for Bud? Did I hear that right? I'm sorry.
Right, we're gonna interview three candidates.
Three candidates, okay.
Yeah. So, I'm confident we'll find somebody within that pool.
So, then we get between the interim person and that person, if we're able to hire him, we'll be able to pick up the slack in the meantime?
At least maintain our head above water to, in terms of getting that process started, and that's the unknown, but I, I agree with you, Carol walked out the door with fifteen years of experience, and, you know, she had a wealth of information, and I think that your comment about getting the right match and the right person is, is valid.
And that allows us to do it also.
So, do you need a motion from us, or just consensus?
Just consensus, I think, would be a problem.
I think, I think it's a good idea.
To bring this person on, like, does anyone on the council want to meet this person?
I would like to, I'd like to know a little bit about them, their background, stuff like that, where they worked, and my biggest concern with everything going on in Town Hall is, how are people, what the rapport is with our people, with our townspeople? That's the most important thing. I want somebody that's here, that's ready and willing, to do what we need to do, to help our townspeople, to help our businesses, to expedite everything we can, and we kind of need to change the reputation of this town a little bit, because we've, we've come across in the past as a little unfriendly, and I think we need to straighten this out and do things the right way.
Well, I've never worked with Al, but I've met with him, talked with him, and, you know, I think he, as a former employee, I think he's got the right disposition to handle on a temporary...
Right, I mean, as far as general, all-new hiring, you know, not just this position, because that's, I think, is one of the most important aspects of people working in Town Hall, that people want to come in here and get things straightened out, you know, and I, I think that's important.
I agree.
Well, and I guess we...
We would want to meet him. Absolutely.
Yeah, I feel the same way.
Okay. I have a problem with that. So, just the consensus would be to bring him in and meet him, and if we're all okay, we're gonna put him on?
Well, not this, not this part-time, I think this part-time guy is fine.
You're talking about, you're talking about the permanent...
Right, we're talking about permanent positions, right. The part-time guy's... The part-time guys, put them in, plug them in and let them do what you gotta do.
Any kind of assistance.
Right, exactly.
That's what, that's the question I was asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I definitely agree on the permanent people. I wasn't as concerned about the part-time.
Right, yeah, this part-time thing, just do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't wanna hold up.
Meaning what, we're gonna bring him to a council meeting or you're gonna go to these interviews on Monday?
No, I'm not going to interviews.
Why don't we just have Mike pick who he thinks is the best and then we meet him?
Right.
Which is the ZEO, that's what he's interviewing for.
So we'll bring in the top candidate to our next meeting, is that?
Yeah, just meet him, see how he, how he is.
Okay.
That, that makes sense, right?
Yeah, it's fine.
I'm a, I'm a first impression person.
Let's go forward.
Why wouldn't we bring in the top two candidates?
Exactly.
Mike, there's only one other choice. Freehold, three of them?
One, two, three.
So, uh, let's look at three.
Whatever you want, pal. All right, so the general consensus is bring in the part-time.
I, I mean, if we're gonna look at two, we may as well look at three, I guess.
But are we interviewing them or?
No.
Let's be realistic.
Yeah.
Hold on a second. Mike's gonna interview these people. If he decides somebody's got three heads, there's no point in bringing them in.
Right.
Give, give him that discretion.
I just, I'm a first impression person. I like to look somebody in the eye and talk to them. See if they can stare me back in the eye.
I'll go with whatever you want, I just.
But, right, I mean, I'd recommend the top candidate, if there's a, if there's an issue, then we go to the second.
Yeah.
But that way we save you some time, save us, you know?
Yeah. I just don't wanna make mistakes.
Okay. So go forward with the part-timer, but on the ZEO, we'll bring that.
Yeah.
Pick the best guy and bring him to us, I guess, right? Is that what, how we settle this or?
So if he comes to in front of us, then what do we do at that time? Do we just?
Well, I.
Analyze his personality and decide whether he's kind or something like what? I don't understand.
We wanna know who.
Do you ever look into somebody's eyes and see something? Exactly.
I do, I mean, I, I just.
All right, so, so, so let me, let me fill you in, 'cause you've lived in town, what, four years? Okay, so I'm gonna go to, and he's not in the room tonight, but, you know, when I got on the council a very long time ago, all administrative positions were brought before the town council, the top three candidates, okay? And I'm gonna rest my case on this one. The head of public works, even your party would have to agree that he does a great job. So, do you know how he was hired? By the town council. You know what the town manager, not this one, you know where he came in on the town manager's , uh, analysis? Three. So if we didn't see the top three, we would've missed the best public works director in the state. That's why I'm passionate of saying if we're gonna sit here, there's nine of us here, some of us are doctors, or at least one of us is, we have nine intelligent people volunteering for the good of the town, and I don't understand how that practice ever ended, okay? I don't understand how it ever ended. We don't have the power to hire them, we talked with the town manager afterwards and we talked about how these people were there. Now, the number one candidate at that time was a retired public works director from the city of Hampton, and thank God we didn't get him. So, in a nutshell, there's an example of what might happen by the town council looking at somebody. You might get the best candidate out there.
And I have one thing to say. Honestly, town managers come and go, but whatever positions we get filled here, we have to live with for however long they're here. So that's my feeling, I mean.
Welcome to the town council.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
All right. So item nine.
Where is the, what's the? Once we end the story.
All right.
Just gotta bring the top candidate.
Right.
I'll bring the top candidate. And, and it just, it's, I guess, a natural segue to, with, with Vinny's endorsement. Um, at some point in July, the one year, a past a one-year, um, review, annual review, so we should start that process, maybe tie it to July fiscal year.
Anything for you, pal.
Thank you. Uh, but I figured, uh, we'd start that process where, um, you know, we, we meet, uh, to discuss my performance and then goals and objectives and things of that nature, so, um, I'll just go, I guess, into the past years, look at how you, how you conducted that process, um, and I guess it starts.
What should we have, you know, pay what you're gonna do next year?
Yeah, I still have, remember the, that manager's, uh, valuation kind of form? I saved that, so, you know, I'll send that to everyone again, and we can look at that process.
But we'd like to look forward to see what you're gonna accomplish in the next year.
Yep. And is that, was that just taken care of in a, in a one, uh, meeting process or two? Do you?
I'm not, I don't remember, I'd have to look at my.
Actually, yeah, actually it was more than one.
More than one, yeah, it was more than one.
Yeah.
All right. I'll, I'll go.
I have a file on it at my computer, I'll pull up and send to everyone, um, and, and the form that we kinda use.
Okay. Great. And, and just one other quick note was, uh, I emailed it out, but, uh, I'll prep for a bittersweet, there's a request, uh, how the vacant lot that the, the town owns, sixteen bittersweet, um, and there's a request to, uh, move that or sell that to the land trust. So, um, unless there are any objections, I can prep that and get that ready for the next meeting.
What do you want me to prep it?
Well, to, to go through, I mean, as a process, we have to, we have to follow with disposition of, of town property.
Eight twenty-four referral.
Eight twenty-four referral and then, um, but I, you know, I'm just raising it now.
I think you gotta start by asking the land trust if they would be willing to take title to it.
Yes, they are.
Then an eight twenty-four referral.
Yeah. As far as I know, I haven't talked with them directly, but indirectly, um, the answer is yes, they're very much interested. I have yet to talk with them, but we'll confirm directly with that and then start the process.
Now, on that subdivision, I was told, and I don't know if it's true, but when it was developed, it's on the deed that, that parcel was supposed to be a park or it was donated to the town? Is that?
I think donated to the town in sixty-seven as, as restricted open space.
Right.
I don't know if the, the park designation was, was given.
Okay. That's what he was referring to, but I don't.
We should look at it though, and I know the overlay maps, Kurt, they look awful close-up there. I mean, definitely that last neighbor, if their house isn't on the town's land, their yard and they're maintaining town property.
I did look at more detail after the talk and, and I would say it looks, and I looked at it a little bit more and there could be encroachment on there.
Yeah, it kinda looks that way to me.
It looked that way. A lot of times though, those are plus and minus, but in that particular case.
Right.
It looked like it was a pretty good bid.
So, what I think needs to happen with that thing is we need to get that boundary cleared up.
Yeah.
'Cause the town doesn't wanna own land that somebody has a house on or a part of a house or their swimming pool or a backyard or anything like that. So unfortunately, it's gonna cost us some money, but we need to get a surveyor to, to find that line, certainly before we give it to the land trust with somebody's, uh, maybe encroaching on the town land.
And then what happens if it's on, if it's town land?
Take it down.
We'll give them a shot. Al will vote to take it down.
Well, I guess we could, can, can you have them, can you sell them that part of the property or whatever, or, I don't know how.
No, you can't, because it's a designated park.
Right, designated.
It's a designated park, so you couldn't. They have to take down, uh, what they have there.
How would that happen? Just taking a survey, right?
How'd that happen, that they would? Well, over time, they just, because it's open space, over time, they probably just took.
Took it over.
Well, not if the house, but if it's.
That's the issue, the corner of the house is on.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm not sure. On the map it was, do you?
Looks like a house, looks like it's on.
Right, so I think we need to get that cleared up.
Yeah, we do. Let's cross that bridge where we get there.
Water company property too, it's a, a button up there as well.
It's not funny with people on that house.
We also, Mike, we also, whatever, we, we get, maybe lease a warranty and pull a copy of that deed, of that open space, and just make sure there's no restriction or anything here that would be violating that transfer.
I would think in sixty-seven, that would've been fairly early for planning and zoning to have come up with keeping open space in a subdivision.
I don't know about, I, I can't imagine that a developer would've given us, what was it, a hundred acres?
He wouldn't have given it to us if he didn't have to.
That would be a really lot if, if somebody was not required to donate it.
If you wanna say you'd see why.
It's a difficult piece.
Yeah.
We oughta just check anyway, we oughta, we gotta see a copy of the.
So Kurt, what do we need to do so that you can get a surveyor up there?
Well, then what I would, I could do, I could get some quotes.
Yeah.
To survey and then come back and then see what we, I mean, give it to you a cost, but then we'll know what, you know, what the cost would be. I can get three votes and, uh, create a survey and.
And really, and they just need to do that line?
Yeah.
And they, and they, and they really only have to?
What they're gonna have to do is.
They're gonna have to establish control.
Yeah, they're gonna have to do that line, but then at the end, um, if there's an encroachment, there's a, what do we do for a resolution? How does that happen? Is there, is there a transfer?
Right, but.
Something like, some of those things.
Unfortunately, we have to, we have to go down this path.
Oh, yeah, you have to take the first.
We can't sit there and say, oh, someone's got, someone's house is on the town land.
You get it, they come up and they have title jury, I don't think, 'cause something may or may not have happened right.
Right.
But I'll, I'll get some numbers.
Great.
All right. Item nine, community events and presentations. Uh, I had Anthony make copies, I know he probably didn't have a chance to really read it, but this was from the state and I guess they've been promoting this every year, and I don't know if it's something we wanna get involved with, but it seems like it's showcasing area towns and, you know, to me, it might be something good that would get our town on the map and show, you know, kind of, uh, advertise, get our town out there. Um, it takes a little effort, we have to, you know, maybe put some things on a website. Um, it starts June twelfth and it's basically asking residents to vote for their favorite Connecticut, still revolutionary Connecticut town, and, you know, by showcasing different area attractions, like maybe Rose's Orchard or, you know, um, you know, attributes in our town, we have a vineyard, um, historic district, a number of different things.
Maybe we should send a copy of this to the Totaka Historical Society?
Yeah, we could send it to them, EDC, uh, Chamber, maybe get it on our town website, uh, Totaka Times, and just get the word out, maybe make a little brochure that you could hang in some shops. Basically, people have the opportunity to vote and if you win, uh, I mean, it looks like you get kinda bragging rights and, you know, some recognition. But I think our town's unique and, you know, it'd be, maybe fun to do for our town. I don't know of any other community events. Um, item ten, citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence.
Well, I'm gonna go back to item nine, 'cause Al won't say anything about what's going on in town this weekend, but he's preserving the agriculture attitude of the town and he's having a tractor pull at his orchards this weekend, weather permitting. And they always do a good job down there and, uh, he, we've had fun there in the heat, we've had fun almost, last year he had to move the week out due to the swamp, but I'm sure it'll be a good time this weekend and I'd like to see, you know, a lot of people show up and, because it is, it's a, a great town, we have a lot of fun stuff going on. Don might bring his old Pontiac so we can have tractors and old cars, you know? Uh, so again, I, I wanna make a, go into the statement portion because.
What day and what time?
Uh, Saturday, it starts, well, the tractors show up at eight, I believe, right out the way in. But the actual pulling allegedly starts at nine. Allegedly.
Okay.
But it's a good time. Unfortunately, I'm a red tractor fan, at the end all we see is green, but I won't say anything about that. But it's always a good time and Al does make everybody feel very welcome and we have a good time there. Uh, citizen statements and correspondences, um, with Carol having to step down, I just, I don't want her to step down without being recognized. I mean, when we started the Agriculture Commission, I had no idea what was going on. She took us under her wing and that woman spent countless hours of her own time over and above her regular work week, helping us get started, figuring out what regulations. We wouldn't have a metal roof on that barn on Route twenty-two without the fantastic grant she wrote up and, uh, and again, to have her have to walk out the door, she's left a legacy and I don't think a lot of people appreciate. And I, I shared something with Anthony this morning, and my wife and I happened to be on the east side of town one night, we were coming home, come down the hill, little white Hyundai, a little gray Hyundai in the backyard, and Carol was still working at eight o'clock at night on something. So again, she gave it more than, than most employees, and I wanna lead into what Vinny says about the, as you walk through that Town Hall door, any office you walk into, you are made to feel welcome in. There is no negative feeling under this roof anywhere. And you can go right around the whole circle, you can start with Gina, Rita, you can go into planning and zoning, you can go down to finance, there's a couple questionable people there, but, but I mean, but the whole building, I mean, this is, this is family, you walk in, it's got that family look and the feel.
It should be.
Yeah, and, and so I don't know if anybody's got a problem, they got the problem, walking in with a bad attitude.
That's part of, that's part of dealing with the public.
Well, you know that, but I don't think the problem's behind any counter in this building, believe me. When I've ever needed any kinda help or anything, it's, I, I like Lisa, she's.
Oh, Lisa, I, no problem, I don't really have a problem with anybody.
You know, so anybody, I mean.
But when you hear things from your constituents, you have to voice concerns?
You do.
Absolutely.
But maybe, but maybe the constituents the problem? Did you ever think of that?
You know something? Absolutely, but that's part of dealing with the public.
I understand that, I was in customer service.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not an easy thing.
You take it and you move on, you let them vent and you move on.
Exactly.
So, but again, I mean, our Town Hall employees, we've got the best of the best working under this roof, and I understand you wanna keep it that.
Absolutely.
And, and, you know, I don't know if Franny ever sleeps, I mean, you know, he's.
Franny and I went to school together, we're, I've known Franny forever, he's, uh, one of the.
Yeah.
Good, good people on this earth.
You know, you hate to ask him for anything because he's already twelve people at my back seven.
He's stretched way too far already.
I know. And, and I don't wanna see the man die, drop dead someday either.
God forbid.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, again, I, I wanted just to comment, you know, 'cause I, I can never thank Carol enough for what she did for the Agriculture Commission and it's a terrible, terrible loss and, and, you know, it's just, it hits, hits hard.
Well, hopefully she's gonna have a nice, enjoyable.
Hopefully, yes, yes.
Retirement.
So, and, but again, I, I wanted to stick up for the Town Hall employees too.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with anybody in the Town Hall. Yeah, I don't have a problem with anybody in the town hall.
And comparative.
I want to keep it that way and make sure our future is bright, put it that way.
Let's keep it a hometown town, if we can somehow. Because Guilford, I think, has lost it. That's a status town. East Stevens is a condo town, and we got North Branford in between.
Yeah, we do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you, Cliff.
And the other? Okay. Item 11, resignations and appointments. Item A, a reappointment. Victor Palma Park and Recreation Commission term to expire 12/31/2016.
Make the motion.
I just got one question. Was this the one that was tabled last night?
Yes, yes.
And what was the...
His attendance was fine at the meetings that were held.
Yeah, he went to all the meetings.
Yes.
Good. That's good.
So I have moved by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item B, appointment, Mr. Bill Chody to the South Central Cable Advisory Board.
It's the council, and I moved that appointment.
Second?
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item 12, unfinished business discussion in action. Updates to the defined benefit plan documents, police union. I believe that's tabled still. Item B, presentation by Dave Matthew from H.D. Seeger on our self-insurance option. Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. My name's Dave Matthew. I'm the vice president in charge of the group in Life Department at H.D. Seeger Insurance in Chesapeake, Connecticut. We've been the insurance consultant on the employee benefit plan for about six or seven years in the town of North Branford. And Mike and Anthony asked me here tonight just to review a self-insurance option or the funding mechanisms, what we currently involve, the group health plan and dental plan, and what alternatives are out there. So currently, we fully insure the group health plan, which makes up the medical plan, and the RX, which is the prescription drug plan with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. Three years ago, we self-insured the dental plan. Previous to that, it was fully insured with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. We did the analysis that our claims have pretty much leveled off, so we did change to a self-insured option three years ago. Dental is an easy analysis to do, because you don't have catastrophic losses in dental insurance. Your largest cost would be a crown or a bridge or something like that. However, group insurance, medical insurance, and prescription drug insurance is a little different. I put together a little chart here for you, and I believe everyone has that, going back to July 2010, and how a self-insurance plan would have stacked up with the current fully insured plan. What I'd like to do is, it's a funding decision, so any coverage and benefits would not change under a self-insurance plan. So the benefits and coverage that are afforded to the employees today would continue under a self-insured plan. It's just how the town would reimburse Blue Cross Blue Shield for the claims, how the claims would be administered, however, the benefits and coverages would not change. So I wanted to be very clear on that. So what I did here is I took the last three years, the full year, and the current year-to-date. You could see in 2010, we actually had very good experience, our paid claims versus what the total premiums were. I am asking for some more information going back, because I believe our first or second year, when we were engaged as a consultant, we experienced some high 20% increases. So obviously, our claims information back there has to be looked at going forward. So when we do the analysis, we're on a July, excuse me, yes, July 1 renewal date. So this year, we will continue on our fully insured option. Come next year, what we will do is we will go back 10 years and develop the information for you and come back with an estimate of what the self-insurance costs would be according to the fully insured cost. And again, there's some other things involved in the self-insurance process besides what the coverages are. It's how the funding mechanism will be put into place, how the allocation of the claims will be done. Again, you're grouped with the Board of Education, so you have to determine whether or not the town is going to pay their claims, the board is going to pay their claims, or you agree on a percentage based on contracts or such. So there's some other fundamental things that have to take place when looking at a self-insured plan. Also, there are a number of state mandates in the state of Connecticut. You have to accept those mandates if you're fully insured. If you're self-insured, you don't have to accept the mandates. So again, that's a decision, because basically, the town council becomes the insurance company, okay? So you have to decide, if a new mandate comes down the way from the legislature, you have to determine whether or not you want to accept it or not. Again, so there's some administration involved in a self-insured plan. A fully insured has the jurisdiction of the State Insurance Commissioner. He or she is the final say. Self-insurance plan, you are the final say when it comes to insurance, so there are other things to go forward.
Can you give an example of what one of those mandates might be that...
Oh, absolutely.
Just so that we, I mean, is it a cost-incurring mandate?
There is a cost-incurring mandate. So for instance, the newest state insurance mandate was gender transition. So if you want a sex change operation, it is now covered under your medical plan. Fully insured, you have to take that, what the insurance commissioner says. If you're self-insured, you could decide whether or not to cover it. Some of the other mandates going back were mental parity, where mental parity became, whether or not, you know, substance abuse or any psychological testing, it would be treated like a normal illness, okay? A lot of people took that, because there was a $50,000 maximum. The state of Connecticut said there shouldn't be a maximum line to that, so you automatically took that mandate. So there's a number of mandates that come out every year, depending on how coverage is associated.
So the mandates you're talking about are all, have to do with coverage?
Correct, exactly, how things are covered. Now, there are also federal mandates, the Affordable Care Act. So both fully insured and self-insurance plans have to take federal mandates, but they could decide whether or not they want a state mandate. Okay, so there's just some administration and a little more thought that has to be put in besides the financial ramifications of self-insurance plan. It's how the plans are administered. But most towns and boards that have come off fully insured have put in, say, well, we will accept the state mandates. Make it easy. And there is always an cost associated with a state mandate, because there's more coverage afforded to people. So obviously, there's more claims and there's more costs, things like that. So we have looked at self-insurance in the past. You could see how your contracts and what I did here. A contract is an employee, a member is a person covered under your plan. So for instance, in July of 2010, you have 330 employees covered under your plan. Of that, 844, that would be the employees plus the spouse plus the dependent, okay? So you could see how your group has fallen from July 2010, from 333 to 308. So obviously, you've gotten a little smaller, and the same things with the contracts. You almost dropped 90 contracts, okay? So again, the smaller the group, the more volatile it is because of your insurance, because one large claim could really tip the scales of self-insurance plans. So you are getting smaller, not larger. The rule of thumb is to have about 500 employees on a self-insurance plan, but because of the Affordable Care Act, some minimum essential benefits, and the additional Affordable Care Act taxes, self-insurance is becoming more and more attractive, okay? Because some of the Affordable Care Act taxes that are associated with a fully insured plan are not in a self-insured plan, okay? So the money you would save on taxes, you could put towards your claims or buy a little more protection, which would be the stop-loss, because you don't want to... You always buy stop-loss, which is an insurance policy above for catastrophic claims. So it's getting more and more attractive, because the Affordable Care Act taxes, because the taxes are going up every year. The premium tax this year is about 2.4% of your premium. That basically, it's a pass-through from Anthem. It's built into your premium, and Anthem will send it to the federal government or the state exchange. Next year, it's going up to 3.25. Everyone read, has read how the exchanges aren't really doing very well, loss ration-wise. So those taxes are going to go up and up and up.
Skyrocket.
Right, exactly. So self-insurance, you don't have to pay those taxes, which is a good thing. So you could take that money and put it into the fund. Also, you have to set up a reserve for your catastrophic losses. Obviously, the town has to, under the state of Connecticut, the town has to control reserves. The Board of Education cannot. So when your first year, obviously, you're going to save some money because of your expected losses or anticipated losses. However, it's always good to budget a little higher, because if you have a bad year, you're going to be in trouble. You could look at the current year. So if this was our first year of self-insurance, we currently paid $4.1 million. If we're self-insured, we probably would have paid almost $4.6 million, okay? So you could see how the wave goes up and down. So obviously, over a four-year period, self-insurance would have benefited the town. But again, we want to take, because of your size, take a larger snapshot, go back another three or four years to see how that's going. Also, track the contracts, because the contracts seem to have been stabilized. I mean, the hiring is not going up or the decreases, so we could get a better handle on that. So the process would start in October, November. We track the losses, and we present to Mike and Anthony a self-insurance plan, what the expected claims were, what the retention charges are, and those are the administrative expenses that an insurance company charges insured, and then what stop-loss levels that we would purchase. We purchase, you know, we have to be responsible for the first $100,000 of our claims, you know, $200,000, $250,000, things like that. So there's different parameters and how much risk you want to take. And obviously, your size group, it's good to take baby steps. Maybe buy a little lower attachment point the first year, build up some reservings, and then over the period of time, take a conservative approach, but take, you know, one step at a time.
Now, all these plans stay exactly as they are with the contracts?
Exactly. The plans are identical. As I said, benefits and coverages do not change. It's basically...
Now, do people get like an HSA card or anything? Would they go for prescriptions or what?
Well, however, there's two different things, and we could get into the health savings account too. That would be a benefit change or a benefit differential. This is basically taking what we have today, instead of paying Blue Cross Blue Shield 12 months of premium for it, we'd switch it. We would pay for our own claims and buy some insurance or stop-loss and retention charges. So if our claims don't occur, we don't have to pay. So for instance, for Blue Cross Blue Shield, if we have a dollar of claims or $10 million of claims, we're going to pay the same amount of money, self-insurance. That's not going to happen. Yes, sir.
So if you look at these four years...
Yes.
We paid about 1.4 million more money than the claims. If we were self-insured, we would have only paid those claims, or...
We would have paid the claims plus the retention and the stop-loss fees. Correct.
Which are indicated on here.
Which are indicated.
So it's still the 1.4.
So it's about 1.4 over the last years. And again, this year, it's not tracking, so again, once we, you know, once July ends, so in August, we'll get the July claims, and then I could give you four solid years, and then go back another four to give you a better snapshot, because there have been years previously that we have had double-digit increases, and I think 21%, 22%, maybe four or five years ago. So our claims really spiked.
This year, we...
We're at 12%.
12%.
So... Right. We're also, we have a 12% increase, but we're also coming off a 24-month rate guarantee. So you did pretty well for yourself. Yeah, and look at the claims. You got a 12% off a claim pick that you're already $500,000 over the fully insured premium after 10 months.
How many towns in Connecticut have gone self-insured?
It really depends on the size of the town. It used to be Blue Cross Blue Shield, and most insurance companies would not offer self-insurance unless you were over 250 lives. Really, as I said before, the marquee is about 500 lives, because your credit, it's called credibility, because you're large enough to sustain losses. Again, with the Affordable Care Act, there's probably $100,000 of taxes included in your premium going forward. So if we don't have to pay those taxes, and we could put it in reserves or buy better stop-loss protection, we could do that. So with the Affordable Care Act, it's much more attractive to be self-insured. So I would say, two years ago, the group 300 or less, there were no self-insured plans. This year, there's probably two or three. And then going forward next year, because as insurance companies gear up and really price their stop-loss, because, you know, stop-loss is key. That's the protection you're afforded. So insurance companies, once they get the experience and look at it, their stop-loss is going to be more competitive, things like that.
So it looks like the, and for June 2013 to April 2014, that we would have, if we were self-insured, that we would be paying more than we would have. And that's because it's a smaller group, or it's because...
It's just your claims have increased.
And there's no way to predict that.
Exactly. Well, there are... How it works, we get an estimated loss pick. The estimated loss pick is what Blue Cross Blue Shield, taking the past 12 months, trending it out and putting on medical trend on top of that. So they would come up with an estimated loss pick for you. Now, that loss pick could go up and down. That's where you come in and buy stop-loss insurance. So you say, you want to protect on a catastrophic basis, so we don't want to pay any claim of, say, over $100,000, and we want to buy aggregate stop-loss coverage, saying, if Blue Cross Blue Shield says our loss pick's $5 million and it blows up to $7, well, we want protection on the aggregate, say, if we don't have the big catastrophic losses. We have a lot of claims just under that. So you have two forms of protection, because you don't want to go to bond for insurance, things like that. So this year is a perfect example, where you get the, you know, the first two years were great. Year three was about a $200,000 difference. Year four, so you, things like that. And that's why it's so important to set up a reserve structure. So when year four hits, you have that $500,000 in the bank. Because when you budget your plan, you budget on an expected basis and build up the reserves over a period of time. A lot of towns have been hit, because they set up a budget, and they set up reserves, and after four or five years, everything's great, and they go into the reserve and they take it, and year five hits, and there's no reserves left. So it's very, very important to set up a reserve structure where it's hands-off. It's for insurance, and that's it. And again, that's the process we would go through and help out Mike and Anthony in your sense. Any questions on the self-insure? So we will go through that process this year. Also, the insurance renewal process, we have gone out to market. We have been with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield several years, since Moses has shorts, I think, right? More shorts. So we have gone out to bid. We've Cigna, Connecticut Air, Aetna, and things like that. So Anthem has always come up and been the most competitive, of course. So we do test the market for you going forward. We've also gone to the state plan, again, comparing it to the current Anthem plan. So these guys, and we've done our due diligence to make sure North Branford has the best program for you folks and your employees.
So, so after July...
So your renewal is July 1 this year, so you'll continue on a fully insured basis. So next year, normally, we get the renewal from Blue Cross Blue Shield in December, January, December, and we go back and negotiate with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We'll also offer or ask for a self-insured quote at that time. And then we will determine what the bet, you know, taking into consideration the Affordable Care Act taxes at the time, see what our catastrophic losses are, because we could pull any claim over $50,000. And again, it's all HIPAA-protected, protected information, so no one knows who the claims are and such. See what the catastrophic, see what the prognostices are for those claims going forward. So if we have a couple large claims going forward, it will make a determination whether or not we want to self-insure those claims. Again, we also want to look at the prescription drugs. Prescription drugs are the highest utilized and the highest increase of all the providers under an insurance plan. You can't turn on the television without seeing a prescription drug commercial. Everyone sees Sally Fields and Phil Mickelson. Well, they're endorsing a pill that costs $3,500 a month, okay? So that's how much that is. So any person, I think it's Nexium or Amberall or something, it's a $36,000 claim a year. So do you want to self-insure that, okay? So you could see the skyrocketing for prescription drugs. So there's a lot of moving parts involved, but again, we'll start early in the year, come to Mike and Anthony, make a decision, and again, give you a little more detailed presentation on how the self-insurance works and the effects to you administering the program, both financially and managerially.
And we need to keep the, keep Don Legge involved.
Oh, absolutely, yes, absolutely. And again, first and foremost, there's no change to benefits to the employees. The change would be they would get a new ID card with a new suffix, fully insured, self-insured. That's it.
Well, what happens if you go self-insured and the town decides not to go with the state mandates? That would be a change in coverage.
Well, it wouldn't be at the current state mandate. That would be going forward.
Yeah.
So as I said, what's your covered on today? You would still be covered under self-insured.
There's a lot to negotiate, so we should talk about that regularly.
But as I said, most municipalities who move from fully insured to self-insured do accept the state mandates.
Do you know of any towns that tried it and went back?
Uh, no. They've all been... It's a big leap to do it.
Yeah.
They don't want to take the step back. They don't want to take the step back.
Plus the taxes on the Affordable Care Act are going to skyrocket.
Exactly. It's really, the Affordable Care Act has brought the self-insurance down to your level, because the taxes are...
And you're probably looking at 20% increases with that Affordable Care Act, easily.
Well, of your 12%, 4% was the Affordable Care Act.
Really? 4% is the Affordable Care Act?
Yeah. So without the Affordable Care Act, it would have been an 8% increase.
Wow.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
Does anyone else have any questions?
No.
I'm good till we see the next thing.
Okay, do you want to cover health saving, you had mentioned health savings account?
Yeah, well, that's probably when contracts are up and we have to renegotiate, right?
Okay, yep.
Yeah, so that's down the road, anyway.
That's where we are now.
The HSA is actually a good program.
Then it's a good thing to look at.
Like, when you talk to leaders in other towns and stuff, it's like, it's a hard sell initially, but then they claim most employees like an HSA.
Yes.
It's a hard sell.
Again, just like going from fully insured to self-insured, going from your current plan with copayments, you're eliminating copayments and going to a plan with deductibles. Again, it's the Sentry Preferred Network, so the providers are the same, again, assuming we stay with Anthem. Still Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield, still the network, so that while the doctors are in, it's still the same coverages and benefits.
But see, a lot of companies, what they do is, they fund so much of the deductible for the people, and then you have a card, and you just go and get your prescription, you swipe your card. So say you have a $5,000 deductible, and whosever you're working for gives you $4,000 a year towards your deductible.
Right.
So it really doesn't hurt.
Correct. It's a administration, administrative change.
And in a way, you actually watch what you're doing more, kind of doing that.
Correct, consumerism.
Instead of saying, I'm covered in whatever, go do whatever, and it kind of conserves money also.
Correct.
So are we presenting this at all?
We are.
You're on top of it. Of course you are. Okay.
Yes.
That's a good thing.
I've been in an HSA for five years, and it's wonderful.
Yeah, well...
Do you like it?
I do.
I've been in an HSA, too, for a long time, seven years.
Yeah.
See, that's what, like, most people that have it, you very rarely meet someone who doesn't like it, but during the negotiation phase, you hear from a lot of people that are like...
One person.
Yeah, right, one person can ruin the room.
Well, see, the thing is, if you don't use that $4,000 in your first year for prescriptions or whatever, that stays in your HSA account, and that just keeps building up. So say after 10 years, you can have $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 that you haven't used in that for your deductible.
Correct.
So, I mean, it's not a bad thing, it's just like anything else, it's a, take a chance and you take a little risk.
It's changed. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Dave, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very informative. So I just, but before we move on, I mean, everybody here agrees that we should be...
We should look at this.
Pay attention to this going forward.
Absolutely.
So we want to make sure we don't miss anything and have to go another July.
Yeah.
July 1.
Where does the reserve come from? If we decided to, like, this year to go to a, to self-insured or, like, how do you build that reserve? I mean...
It's a different thing.
Sure, okay.
Right, you have to fund it for the self-insurance. That's the whole thing. So you have to set up an account, you have to fund it, and you have to say, we're not going to touch this for anything but insurance. It's like when you set up a business and say, this is my sales tax account, I put money in every week or month and say, so I have my sales tax money, or else the state's going to come down on me. You have to be disciplined with that.
You do take a risk, though, before, you are taking a risk before you have your reserve built up.
Right.
Right. I mean, valid point.
And that's why you have catastrophic...
Just where's the money come from? Because you wouldn't get a bond.
It's a little bit of a gamble.
I mean, if we did it last year, if we did it three years ago, that would have been great, because we would have, we would have a couple of million dollars in reserve, but if we did it this year, we would be out.
Right.
Right, but if we did it on the last four years...
No, no, exactly, so it's a hard, who knows?
And so, that's what we're hoping, that we're going to save a couple hundred thousand a year going forward.
You know, we're looking at 20% with the Affordable Care Act, health insurance is going to skyrocket, just no two ways about it.
Can you, so, let's see, I thought you were done. So on that, on that, on, you know, that, that point...
Yes.
You can buy, like, the first year, so I think it may be covered, the first year, we go in and we're going to fund our claims.
Correct.
And then we're going to fund the reserve, or something towards the reserve, and then everything else, we're going to pay...
You keep your out-of-pocket, like a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, well, how it's set up is, you get billed on a monthly basis for the retention charges and the stop-loss. So Blue Cross Blue Shield will charge you on a 12-month basis. So every month, Anthony will still get a bill for those coverages. And then as you incur claims, Blue Cross Blue Shield, you actually set up a bank account, and they will come in and draw the claims from you to pay the providers, things like that.
Okay.
So for instance, the, your size group, you would probably purchase a hundred thousand dollars specific or individual stop-loss. So the first hundred thousand dollars of every claim, you would be responsible for. So if a premature baby, for instance, they don't call them million-dollar babies for anything, right? So a premature baby would be born in August, so by September, you have hit your hundred thousand dollars, right? So you pay the first hundred thousand dollars, the claims after that, Blue Cross Blue Shield will pay directly and not charge you for. So that's the specific stop-loss. The aggregate stop-loss is Blue Cross Blue Shield's going to come in and say, we expect you to have $5 million of claims this year. So we're going to buy an aggregate stop-loss of 110% or 120%, which means we're going to be responsible, if we bought 110% aggregate stop-loss, we're responsible for 5.5 million dollars of claims. Anything over that, Blue Cross Blue Shield will pay. So that's your risk corridor. So that's the difference. Fully insured will come in, say, $5 million, we're going to save some money, but our risk is the additional half a million dollars. So that's where your point is, that's our moving target the first year, whether or not we're in that. Now, the good thing about doing a self-insurance plan the first year, it's called an immature year, because basically, you're going to pay 11 months of claims in the first 12 months, because if you go to the doctor in June, Blue Cross Blue Shield isn't going to draw it to the next July, so that will go into your following year. So the first month, you don't have to, unless you have a very, very crazy year and buy not very good stop-loss coverage, you could set it up where your self-insurance maximum costs are equal to your fully insured costs. There's really no, and any risk is all reward, because you're going to pay the same thing. So if your claims are down, you keep the money. So you set it up that year. So then going forward, when you look at your expected losses, that's where the budgeting comes in, in the reserve, things like that. So you could set it up the first year, there's very little risk in the way insurance companies do it, because it's an immature year, you could set it up, so you could kind of put stuff off to the next year, at least that will be a new budget season, so you don't have to, you know, you could put it in that budget, as opposed to going back and trying to find a reserve that there's some money in there. There's financial means to do it, so to protect you the first year and give you the opportunity to build up reserve.
Okay, then, you know, one more question on that.
Sure.
How big, so when you get your reserve to, so you want to be like 120% of expected...
Right, so the ideal reserve would be to cover your risk corridor.
Okay.
Right? So because if, Blue Cross Blue Shield, if you buy aggregate stop-loss coverage and your risk corridor is half a million dollars, and you have a half a million dollars of reserves, you're fully, you covered your corridor.
Okay.
So then every year, your operating budget would be expected losses, and your reserve would take up your risk or your risk corridor. And then as you want to build up reserves, you could, instead of paying for 110% aggregate, you could buy 120, 125, and take a little more risk. Or on the specific side, because obviously, the lower the attachment point, the more the premium is, so we're going to start out at $100,000 the first year, second year, maybe go to 125, 150, and on, and then see if our reserves, we could take the risk. But the first year, I suggest a very conservative aggregate and stop-loss attachment point, and then see how the claims go forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Well, while we're talking about insurance, when we joined CCM, they provided our town with the prescription coverage, if you recall. Today, they released the numbers, and North Branford residents saved close to $18,000 on prescription drugs. I thought that was a pretty big number. So paid off pretty well.
Which, I believe, is they saved more than what we've paid in fees...
For CCM, right.
Because we got a reduction the first year, we were, the partial year we were CCM. So I think, I mean, so far, we're ahead of them.
Item C, adoption of proposed tax collection policy. Item one, appointment of the collection agency.
You could go and get some sort of due diligence on the track record of that company with other towns.
Right. That is in your folder.
What we got tonight?
Yeah. Labeled ANRG survey.
You, you, did you sound, did you sound, did you sound...
Yeah, well, we broke it down, actually. Ken took care of the first three, Branford, Guilford, Clinton, and I picked up Hamden. And we went through just a, you know, range of questions that you see there, about how long, what's the communication like, are the checks received, and so forth, you know, right on through to collection tactics, and complaints, and so forth. So we had, you know, developed a list, Anthony and Ken and I sat down and went through that, and then, you know, started calling, and didn't get to everybody on the list, but got to the four, you know, everybody around us, and tried to get as much as we could by today's meeting, just to see where the comments are. And, John.
I missed the last meeting when we did all this. Who came up with this group?
This was based on their client list from ANRG. And so the council fellow was appropriate to reach out and to look and contact these references to find out. I mean, because I guess the concern is, you know, when you go through this process, what happens when, if you go back 15 years, and you start contacting people, you know, what's the fallout? I mean, are these people aggressive, and in their tactics? What does the copy of the letter look like? Things of that nature in terms of people that they're trying to reach? And are you inundated as a council, as a mayor, and the deputy mayor, and all the council members, or boards of selectmen getting inundated with calls and accosted at the grocery store or wherever they are in the community? Or is it relative to the assessor, tax collector, and, you know, town manager? Who's, you know, what's the backlash? And, you know, on scope there, the 15 years, they're saying, yeah, you're going to get at least the one, you know, I got a response from Hamden, was talking about the, you know, the tactics, you know, both good and bad, I mean, not overly aggressive, but amicable, and what you're going to get is, the taxpayer is going to be upset, that's guaranteed. They take the brunt of it in terms of the calls that come in to those various department heads, and they just keep, you know, keep working it.
When does it go to this agency?
Well...
I mean, is there, is there a couple of attempts by our collector to...
Right, that goes to the policy, you guys, the policy calls for the collector to review it. I know you were at the, not the last meeting, but...
Right.
The policy basically says, in February, delinquent goes out, in March, a demand goes out, in April, the tax warrant goes to the marshal, 60-day warrant. So after the marshal exhausts his efforts, then it would go...
Then it goes to the collection agency.
On an annual basis. This first time is a unique one, because you're trying to do a 15-year sweep for the initial list.
Right.
Give them the entire package, have at it, see what you can shake out of the trees. But on a going-forward basis, it'd be on an annual basis, just after the marshal does the 60-day warrants, that list would go to them.
And then after this company, would you just kind of give up on it?
If...
It goes to suspense after this company?
Yeah.
Or remain, yeah.
Okay.
And what was this company's fee?
No, no fees, whatever they collect.
They take a percentage of what they collect?
Right, what they collect, oh, they add it on.
Oh, they add it on?
Okay, so what was their fee?
I think it's 15%, what the state statutes allow for both the marshal...
So 15%. And they, you guys were talking, or Ken was talking, there's 800,000 out there in the last 15 years?
Correct.
So, so my thing is, do, do we go with this company that just showed up here, or would you look at it, like, should you do, you know, a request for this and see...
Well, that's why I asked where we got this company from.
There's other companies out there.
There weren't many companies available, I remember.
There's only three that play the game. These guys seem to be the leader in the municipal market, that's why they ran into, at the recent Task Collector Seminar, I think it was in the, it was in the spring seminar, that's where Ken was talking to them, and they talked about collection, they seemed about having a policy to bring an additional step after the marshal exhausts his efforts, bring an agency on board, and this seemed like a nice fit that they were, that was their specialty.
Right. Yeah, I was just wondering, because I don't know how this name popped up.
It's interesting, because the gentleman who owns this firm, if you go back, if anybody remembers Bonnie Marcel, the collector, probably about, about 20 years ago, we used a firm that this man had at that point for collection. We did have an agency at one point.
Oh, we did.
And I found a letter that I'd written to him back, and I forget, it might have been 94 or 95 neighborhood, and it was the same firm that owns, the same guy that owns this firm owned a firm we used back then. So he's been in the municipal market for many years.
Right. How'd they perform back then?
Uh, good.
Good?
We didn't do as much with the agency, I think with some specific cases we had at that point, we sent to them.
Right.
But it worked out well.
Yeah, things got over, out of hand over the last 15 years, huh?
Well, there's never been a policy.
Right.
And that's where, that's where, that's what, there's two things on your agenda tonight.
Right.
A, a policy, and then B, to appoint this firm.
Company to enforce it.
Correct.
Yep. Everybody's got to play by the rules.
All right, I'll get it started. I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council adopts the attached tax collection process for the operations of the tax office.
Second. Well, I'm just going to ask the question before we go forward with the vote. We're talking about going back 15 years. What, I mean, what have we, what have we done before this? I mean, how did we get to where we have 15 years of, I mean, who are we looking to go after? 15 years personal problems?
Most of it's automobile, or...
Right. This is, the number that Al alluded to was the automobile taxes that are out, the car taxes. And as the woman stood up before you guys, she said, basically, 80% of the folks are out of the state. People move, don't tell anybody, they could be living in Montana for all we know. But, you know, at that one point in time, they had a car tax bill in North Branford that they have not paid.
So how does the, how does, where does it end now, Anthony? Like, if, say somebody has a car, and they sell it, and they don't turn the license plates in.
Right.
Usually, you get taxed, if you didn't turn the plates in, you usually get a tax bill till the plate expires, and then, I guess, because motor vehicle report's back to you, so...
The current practice is that the delinquent list for the current year, every year, over 15 years, you thought, every year has gone through a marshal's hands.
Mm-hmm.
the fifteen years you talk, every year has gone through a marshal's hands. So after the process, in April of every year, the marshal gets a sixty day warrant for all the delinquent motor vehicle bills. He collects what he can collect and then, at that point, they fall off the table. And they sit there until a person needs to re-register a car, or if the guy moved to Montana, my example, you're never going to get it. Whereas these folks before you said, they have national skip tracing. They can plug them in and say, okay, we found James, he's in Montana now. And they can track him down. Did you live in North Branford in nineteen ninety-seven? You have a car tax bill? Yeah, well, the money's still.
What leverage do they have at that point to collect that money? Like, I mean, attack somebody's pay, I mean?
That's a question for, I'm not sure the exact.
They have to hire a lawyer.
No, no, what type, the, the, the agency, right?
Right, well, yeah, I'm talking about the.
They act, they act as, the marshal acts as the collector. I imagine they would act in the same shoes, with the same club the collector has. I mean, you have a tax bill.
But how did they get away with it in the first place? What, I guess what I'm asking is, if we weren't successful in collecting the money?
Right.
And I guess there's no harm in letting them try if there's no cost involved, but I'm just not so sure that they're going to be able to collect money that we couldn't collect if we're at, what, ninety-eight point something percent?
True.
We're pretty good, I mean.
We're doing, we're doing very good, but there's always that, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars is out there and then, as, you know, Mike had mentioned last time, even ten percent of that. Who knows, they get to make it two, five, who knows what they're going to get, but it's found money. As the town on that sheet showed you, they don't, it's found money, it's a win-win situation. The marshal's exhausted his efforts, the bills can come, can come back. Why not just try one more avenue, one more tool to try to get money?
It doesn't cost the town anything to do it.
The thought is, the first year is going to be the fifteen year span.
Right.
And that's going to be, if there's going to be a windfall, it's going to be in the first shot, the first year.
You would imagine so, yeah. But every year also, again, every year, there are a certain number of bills that people move out of the state. So after the bills come back, the marshal gets the bills, does his best to get the money in. So why not put one more level of collection onto it at no cost to the town, let them have at it? Again, the first year, as everybody's taught, is going to be horrendous. People are going to go forward, say, I sold this car in two thousand and three, why do you want it, in two thousand and fourteen, you're asking me for proof of payment? It's impossible. So it's going to be crazy. So between the assessor's office saying, okay, prove to me that you sold the car, okay, here's a, I took it off the insurance, I got a letter from my insurance company, whatever happened to be the case. So it's going to be a nightmare for the first year, quite honestly. But I think we have to make that leap, it's kind of like the self-insurance and the agent, make that leap of faith. Once you go over that hurdle, it's all downhill. It's going over the, it's going to be the nightmare. But we got to do it, otherwise you're going to, why not try?
Plus, we have to have the policy in place.
Right, because the policy says that after you do the marshal, you're going to go to collection agency.
Right.
But you could amend the policy if you want to, if you don't want, if you didn't have a desire to do that, you can say, no, we'll take that clause out of the policy and stop at the marshal. That's your call.
Keep in mind, there's also a flip side to this policy. While we're concerned about going back to somebody and knocking on the door and saying, you owe us taxes from fifteen years ago. For fifteen years, the people have not, those individuals have not paid their bill. And the taxpayers that are paying their taxes are supporting the town. So we've got a responsibility to the people that pay on a regular basis to minimize that bill to them, which they're picking up from people who don't pay.
Right.
That's a valid point. You know, we use ninety-eight point five as our percentage in the budget, ninety-eight point six, ninety-eight point seven, as the percentage increase, as this extra tool kicks in and brings more revenue, and maybe bump that number up and the overall taxpayers do save by lowering the mill rate a little bit. So again, it's another tool, try to collect dollars in, no cost to the town.
Can't hurt.
Can't hurt. You know, again, we're willing to take the brunt for that first period, as long as you guys are willing to stomach it with us and live through it and move on.
You got to take some nuts.
I got a hard head, I guess.
Anthony, such a question.
Yes.
I forgot last time, is there any type of a contract that we would be signing with this collection agency?
Yes.
Is that in this packet tonight?
I do not know. Play the truth. I don't believe so, John, no.
I think John should.
Be subject, be subject to John's review, obviously.
Well, should we, are we going to table it or?
Well, the motion is just to pass.
Pass the policy.
Yeah, it's to pass the policy.
That's the first motion. The second motion is to engage that firm.
Correct.
But I would make that caveat to include John's.
So the motion is to pass the policy. That's the motion that's on the floor.
All right. I have a motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitmore?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fucey?
Yes.
Councilor Hodgson?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Now, the second motion, Al raises a valid point, both in terms of there are competing firms out there and in the spirit of our purchasing ordinance, which I'm not sure we're actually buying something here, but if we're buying something, we'd have to go out and bid. What do we know about the other firms that compete with this company and why aren't we at least even talking about it?
I'll be certain, if you'd like me to do an RFQ, request for qualifications, and put it out there and certainly explore that avenue, see what else responds and do the same kind of due diligence background check on the other firms and see if it's the right choice for us. We could certainly do that.
I think, I think we should, yeah.
Yeah, I can see what.
Okay.
We're just not going to take action. We're just not going to take action on appointing a firm. We're going to wait for them to come back with, with an RFQ.
Item D, bond resolutions to finance previously approved capital projects. Item A, unexpended radio, narrowbanding radio project, resolution to consider and act upon the proposed resolution entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Transfer of Unexpended Bond Proceeds to Fund Certain Costs Associated with the Narrowbanding Radio Project and the Public Works Roof Replacement Project.
I would just like, for the purposes of the bond council, when you pass these, you need to read that entire thing that Anthony just read and with the phrase, "in its entirety." So you have to, you adopt the resolution authorizing the transfer such in its entirety, and that would be the way the motion should be written.
I move to adopt the resolution authorizing the transfer of unexpended bond proceeds to fund certain costs associated with a narrowbanding radio project and a public works roof replacement project in its entirety.
Second?
Moved by Councilor Fawnin, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitmore?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucey?
Yes.
Councilor Hodgson?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item B, unexpended bond proceeds to fund certain costs associated with the public improvements resolution, to consider and act upon the proposed resolution entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Transfer of Unexpended Bond Proceeds to Fund Certain Costs Associated with the Appropriation, five and a half, five hundred and fifty-six million for various public improvements is authorized in the capital improvement program, two thousand twelve, thirteen, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, inclusive in authorizing the issuance of five and a half million, six bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose.
Anthony, just so I understand this, we talked about, I'm sorry, what?
We're not, we're not borrowing.
Okay, these were the bands, correct?
This is the unused proceeds, M B I S.
Right.
But he has to authorize them as bondable projects, so you can use those bond proceeds for them.
Okay, in the budget process, we talked about issuing bands in this low interest climate.
Right.
To fund capital improvements. That is not what we are authorizing here?
Right. We talked subsequently that instead of issuing new money, we'll stick to the money we have in our pocket now, the M B I S proceeds is, the question I thought you were going to ask was, we had about five point three million dollars of M B I S proceeds. So how can you buy five point five million dollars of the goods with five point three million dollars of the money? And the answer is that you look at the two large projects, the T V E S roof and N B H S roof, he has to account for the entire project, whereas we're looking at just the town piece of it. His resolution covers both pieces, both the state piece and the town piece. We're not going to pay, obviously, five point five, six. But the decision was made subsequent to that conversation during the budget time, that instead of issuing bands at all, save the issuance cost, we have five point three million dollars of M B I S.
So we will avoid the process of going out to borrow up with bands.
Exactly. But he has to call them bondable projects to use those bond proceeds. And then, once we get the number from the state as far as the final M B I S cost, we'll move the money, close that fund out and move on with life.
Those lawyers have a way of obfuscating and confusing.
Yeah. Well, I thought you, when you saw about, you know, issuing bonds or making temporary borrowings, that's kind of raises the flag. We're not issuing borrowings at all, it's cash on hand.
That's where I was going, just not as articulately as you.
But have we closed out the M B I S project? So do we know that there's enough money to do all this?
Again, because we'll get only our piece. We said of that five point three, there was like, I think it was a two point six and we're good. I'm confident.
Well, I thought we were going to wait until the project was closed out because you had anticipated that it would be within maybe sixty days.
The wheels of the state moves slower than the wheels of town government. Put it that way. The project, the problem that we have is a bunch of these things are happening over the summer. So we need to free up the money now to be able to do them, particularly the school projects, the bathroom renovations, the science rooms, all have to happen over the summertime. So we're already, you know, less than a month and school ending.
But we haven't talked about who is managing those projects yet, so how can they be happening over the summertime if we don't know? Because it's a capital project and the council has not made the decision as to whether the council handles it, the Board of Ed, or permanent projects. So how do we know that they're happening over the summer? Who made that decision?
That's a decision for other people besides me. The money's my concern.
Yeah, it's just putting, it's sort of getting prepped for the money, subject to even, you know, a decision of the council tonight and, you know, moving into Monday's permanent project building committee to say, listen, you know, the money can be there, but you still have an outstanding issue of process, a process question and a management question.
Okay.
And this just sets the stage that the money will be available for us.
Okay.
Pending your, working it all out to figure, yeah.
So how are they going to get this all orchestrated to happen in July, when it's June's third or whatever it is today?
I think you make the decision now, you, I mean, to me, you're the body that says, listen, this is.
Right, I know that. We can, we can say we have the money now, but they have to still send requests out for bids and all that stuff, right? Or is that all done already? By who?
No, not, none of, none of.
None of it's done?
Not, not done.
So how are we going to do this in thirty days and get it done before September?
You're going to have to, I think.
Is it possible, time-wise? It doesn't seem it, but you tell me.
I don't know the scope yet. I think it's a conversation for the council to say.
This was part of the discussion that we wanted to have at the last communication meeting with the Board of Ed in May, and that meeting was canceled.
Because we don't want them to show up and say, well, this is here what it is and this is what it costs, and they're going to do it right now. Because that's what they always do to us. Somebody always comes up with this huge emergency to get it done, and this is the price, and we need to do it right now.
It costs more.
And it costs.
We've got a couple of components to make this all happen. Money is probably first and foremost. So we approve the money, if we don't like the process, we stop in our tracks. But let's move the money to where we need it to be.
That's fine and dandy. That's okay.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, and you're absolutely right. They have tried to stuff stuff down our throat at the last minute and then say, hey, what are you guys doing by holding this up on this?
Right.
That's a different question.
Right.
And I do think it requires immediate attention, probably sending it to the permanent project building committee. But Monday, we tend to have a meeting with them, maybe we get some answers then. If we don't, we make some decisions.
Right. Okay. That's fine with me, we just need to keep.
The process, there isn't a process and that's what we need to do.
We need to keep kind of a very close eye on it.
Yeah, we put that, Vinnie's right, we put that move off for like a year. And now here we are, June 30th, and we're not out for bids.
Well, the roof for the high school is, that is out for bid, that has been approved. That's ready to go. That, that project went to permanent project. It's, it's the other projects that we approved during the budget process, which were the bathrooms, the science renovation and the track.
Right.
That, that discussion has not taken place yet as to how that, the process to handle those.
I just don't want this to get out in front of us.
I believe, you know, they've canceled the last.
Right.
Three to four meetings.
Two.
Two.
So, so that's a discussion for Monday night with them, so.
Well, we want to do these projects, but we want to do them right. So we can approve the money.
All right. Did I have a motion or?
Right. I move to adopt the resolution authorizing the transfer of unexpended bond proceeds to fund certain costs associated with the appropriation of five million, five hundred fifty-six thousand dollars for various public improvements, as authorized in the capital improvements program, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, inclusive, in authorizing the issuance of five million, five hundred fifty-six thousand dollars bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose in its entirety.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Fawnin, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitmore?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucey?
Yes.
Councilor Hodgson?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item E, AT&amp;T Smart Link Response Letter. A letter was sent by Mike Paulus that reads as follows. Dear Ms. Azizi, this letter is to inform you that the town council voted to decline your offer to build a wireless telecommunications facility at twelve Bitter Street Drive, North Branford. While the council can appreciate your desire to improve wireless coverage in our town, the placement of a tower in a residential neighborhood is not in the town's best interest. Sincerely, Michael T. Paulus, Town Manager. Item F, local adoption of South Central Regional Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Good evening again. This item is on the last town council agenda for the adoption of the South Central Regional Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan. It covers ten towns in the region, and it was funded by the council governments through a grant that they obtained for it. One question came up on the suggested motion, which is on the second and last page, item number two, about future revisions and plan maintenance, which includes future revisions and plan maintenance are hereby adopted as part of this resolution for a period of five years from the day of this resolution. I did reach out to the representative of the South Central Regional Council Governments, questioning whether that needed to be in there and what does involve. Basically, but there's an email in here on the second page, where he explained to me there's, there's an annual review that has to take, take place for, with all participating towns, that they have to just update the plan and anything or do some maintenance And the issue is, you can adopt it, including, you can eliminate that section number two in its entirety. You can include it with a modification for the item number two and remove the future revisions and, and include it in just plan maintenance. Because that's probably the only thing that'll ever happen, or you can pass it as is. Not much really happens. I, I think Fire Chief Stewart really hit the nose on the head. The whole point behind this is you need to have this plan in place so when you apply for grants, you can check, do we have a plan? And that's really the gist of it.
So if we knock out future revisions?
And then-
We're good.
We're, we're good. We can move forward.
And they'll-
And they'll accept it. And if there's something major that has to come back, it'll come back.
And we are not precluded from applying for grants?
That's correct.
All right. I'll move to adopt the resolution, amending it by deleting from clause two the phrase "future revisions and." And adopting the remainder of the resolution as printed.
Second.
Moved by Council Fawnin, seconded by Council Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucey?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Item G, the OPEB Approval of Investment Policy Statement.
Before we start, have you folks all clear on what OPEB actually is?
Office of-
What?
No.
No, okay.
I, I mean, I know what it is, but I don't know.
It's the trust fund for our retirees.
Our OPEB assets. OPEB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Boards, required towns to fund post-retirement medical benefits, things like that, through a separate fund, other post-employment benefits. We funded it when we were supposed to by the GASB, and we fund 100% of the ARC that the actuary tells us to put in. That fund grew to over a million dollars over this past fiscal year. We felt it was time to check the waters and see if we could find a better person to manage it. We had it previously with ICMA RC that we have a lot of our investment accounts through. We did do an RFP at that time, and a committee of myself, Dominicki, Michael, and Barbara Feely interviewed the top three or four firms, and the decision was made to go with RBC Wealth Management. As part of that process, there was a realization that there was no formal investment policy statement for these OPEB assets. So what RBC has done is created this investment policy statement, and this is the, probably the third or fourth gyration of it that Michael and I have gone through, and we've kind of revised it to meet our needs and to more closely fit our purposes. And now it needs to be blessed by the council. Right now, the funds, as we transferred them probably in, I think it was February or March, are sitting in a, just like a money market type account, earning about two or three percent. So this would kind of direct the investment policy of how we're going to take the assets from our OPEB trust fund. It mirrors very similarly our pension trust fund. You see on, on the third page end of the memo, it has some international stocks, some large-cap equities. Those in the pension committee recognize some of those, those terms, mid-cap equities, some real estate components, US bonds, and cash. So the goal, obviously, is the preservation of the corpus, not to be super risky, to have a nice asset mix, asset, asset mix so that the assets will grow and pay the premiums of our OPEB fund.
Anthony, a question. You said it's grown, I remember we first put this in place three or four years ago.
Yep, correct.
So it's grown to, you said, in excess of a million dollars.
Correct.
Is that recognized now in our actuarial computations on an annual basis as to where our contributions got to be?
Yes. This is done, this is done biannually. The OPEB is done biannually.
All right, well, then, biannually.
Right.
Are our contributions declining?
No. We're still, this is still a very underfunded program. So it just started, like I said, four or five years ago.
Yeah.
So the liability, in our case, the liability isn't that large because all of our post-retirement benefits stop at age sixty-five, Medicare eligibility. A lot of towns have benefits for life, for families, spouses, that kind of thing. So we're fortunate in that our benefits don't extend past age sixty-five. So our number isn't really that big. The larger piece of our number is the police officers because they can get medical from the day they retire until they're Medicare eligible at age sixty-five. So you may make a twenty-year window in some cases of medic, of medical costs we're paying for. So as, as the plan is very immature, like it's only four or five years old, as you mentioned, there's still a huge funding gap. So the, the plan's not going to decrease as, no. It's not-
How are we funding retirees' benefits right now? Is it coming out of that plan or coming out of operating, annual operating budget?
Every year, the council makes an appropriation. This year, it was three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars.
So then the OPEB fund is funding the retired policeman's medical-
Right. What happens is the money comes from the general fund to the OPEB fund, and out of that, the retiree medical premiums will come out of that. So that's why it's building up because it needs to get to a certain level to be adequately funded. But yeah.
So it's not reflected in the police?
No.
Budget when they come in for the budget request every year?
No, no, no. It started out being around three oh nine for the first two or three years, and this past year, I think it was three forty-six, this past two-year window was the funding. And this, July 1 of 2014, it's due for its biannual evaluation. Milliman does that as well.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council approves the attached investment policy statement for the assets of the other post-employment benefits, OPEB trust fund, subject to the review of the Town Attorney's Office.
Second.
Moved by Council Angeloni, seconded by Council Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucey?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Item H, Proposed Ordinance 2014 dash two, Chapter Forty.
Yeah, these are the two that were actually separated. Forty has the fire insurance fees component, and then two oh five is the next item, which is the signs and, and house numbers. So Chapter Forty is all new language. That, you know, we typically set for, we're set for a public hearing at seven thirty for the next meeting on the seventeenth.
Yep.
If that's how you want to do it. And then the second one, you could do seven forty-five.
Now, reading through this, I notice it said, no bills will ever be sent to any resident or business in the town of North Branford solely in respect of the insurance company. So in other words, what we're doing here, a fire suppression or an accident, I mean, I know the breakdown, but these will be billed to an insurance company.
That is correct.
What if the people don't have insurance?
That's where it was going.
That's, no bill.
No bill?
No bill. It's not like medical insurance, where on an ambulance ride, we're going to bill Anthem, and then if they don't pay, we'll send it to your house, and you're responsible for it. This is unlike that. That's why it's a very high, like a seventy percent, almost write-off. And even, even with that, you're still probably talking, you're probably getting about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars net to the town.
How are you going to know who my insurance company is?
We're going to gather that when we do a car accident or a fire investigation. The fire marshal will have to capture that. Or at a car accident, the police will capture that as far as when they do their reporting, and we can get at the same time or share information.
Before they take you out of the car.
You have insurance.
The jaws of life.
They got the jaws of life.
The car's about to blow, but got a couple of questions.
Sign here, please, Mr. Fawnin.
I have a question about the use of the funds.
Yes.
Since most of it's all medical, why isn't then the use strictly for medical equipment or replacement rather than just for anything for the, for the fire department?
Uh, no, it's not medical at all. It's solely fire.
So-
It's accidents, house fires, business fires, things like that. The medical billing is done through the ambulance billing. That's a totally separate, those are state-set rates. It's a totally separate animal. This is just the-
Right. What about the fund that's set up where this money goes to?
Right, that's what I was asking about.
It says for equipment purchases.
Right.
But I wouldn't be related to some-
Now, what oversight is there by, who is the oversight?
I believe it's the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Yes, is that?
It's in there.
Right. So now the Board of Fire Commissioners has to come to us for approval for equipment.
Yeah, I know that we can delegate that authority.
Any kind of capital purchases.
Town funds.
Right.
Yeah. It's town, wouldn't all, wouldn't all this money have to come into the, well, it has to come into the town coffers?
Right. It's all, it's all in town bank.
Basically, it comes to you.
Yeah, definitely. There's, there's, there's three different things in this one packet. There is the fire marshal fees, which is general fund revenue, similar to building permit fees. What Lisa did was combine them all into one. There's three things combined into one here. You have the fire insurance recovery, then it goes to the office of the fire marshal fees, then it goes to the, yeah, the lost box. It's all considered one in Lisa's eyes because it all pertains to the fire department.
Do we not have these fees?
Whereas last meeting, you had it as three separate ordinances.
These are all, you don't have any of these fees?
So.
No.
Well, just, it's kind of cloudy to me right now as far as the, the authority or the oversight of the fund. I don't know, I mean, I don't know if John knows what the story is. If anybody knows, it's him, who's, who should be in charge of that fund.
I'm just looking at a legal opinion that I wrote about ten days ago on the Board of Fire Commissioners and the powers of it. And basically, they can make regulations for the conduct of the fire department, and may appoint, discipline, or remove for cause, for cause shown, all employees of the department and purchase supplies and equipment necessary for its operation. I don't, I think it's a good question. I don't think, essentially, this is, you're, they're acting as a taxing authority. This is a tax.
Basically, yes.
And I, so I think while I was looking at this, someone was saying, I don't know, Joe or yourself, that this should go through the council. It seems to, preliminarily, that seems to be logical.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the whole system. I just want to know how it's going to be run and who's going to run it.
Okay.
This way, we can keep an eye on it and, and know what's going on with, with the money. Not that it's going to be some great, huge account.
Right.
But let's spend the money wisely.
So basically, on the top of that third page, you want it to say, with the concurrence approval of the Town Council. That's a change. You want, instead of Board of Fire-
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Okay.
Where was that, Anthony?
The top of the third page, going in where it says, starts with-
It starts at the bottom of the second page.
Right. So the, the change, substantive change you want to make is the top of that third page says, with the concurrence slash approval, instead of being at the Board of Fire Commissioner, you want to say at North Branford Town Council.
That's fine with me.
Right.
I mean, they can come with us.
I think so. I'm just wondering, this is a rather expansive ordinance. Where did it, what town was this coming from?
This was a-
Or from a former one?
It was multiple ordinances banded together.
But they were from Connecticut towns?
Oh, yeah, certainly.
Yeah.
Certainly.
I would not be comfortable voting on this until John has time to study it. I don't think we can delegate our responsibility over town funds. I suspect for any purpose, but maybe I'm wrong. But I'd like John to tell us we can and we cannot before we designate anybody other than this council as, as the controller of town funds.
Although we're making a change to make it the Town Council. We're making that change.
You said with the concurrence of the Town Council. I'm not sure that's enough. You're leaving, you're putting the responsibility-
Give me the word you want to put there, and I'll change it. What, what do you want it to say?
I want it to say what John Gesmond tells us is legal.
There you go. Right, and nobody is going to see a bill personally from this.
Correct.
Or a business.
Right.
Okay, because we shouldn't be doing that to our people.
Well, the business is-
Well, do insurance companies pay these fees?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, you understand, too, like, the key lock boxes, there's going to be an initial expense-
Right.
For a business. Like, I'll just use mine, for example. I have multiple buildings. I'm going to have to purchase multiple lock boxes for these buildings.
Well, if they're wrong, you could put them in one complex. You could put one box for the complex.
Oh, you could do that?
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, I wasn't sure. All right. And, I mean, to me, the upfront money is worth it because I have had personal experience where there was a false alarm, and rightly so, they went in, they had to spread my doors. It cost me seven or eight hundred dollars to have doors, you know, repaired. Where with the lock box, they're able, they have a master key, no one else, and they're able to get the key for my personal building, go in without breaking my doors. And it turned out, I don't know, my fry laters were left on or something, and there wasn't a fire. And it's, it would save me eight hundred dollars to help them get into the building quicker. So I, you know, I can't see businesses who are really getting upset with, and they're working on getting the best cost for lock boxes-
Right.
And numbering of all the houses. And I also know how important that is because we have an apartment complex, and I numbered them. But response time, it really, you know, helps if they have. And that's what they're trying to do, is uniform the number system of all our homes. So it makes it easier for responders when they get there. And I believe one of our local businesses, which I was happy to see, they're working with, are getting a lot of these materials.
Right.
So it's kind of a win-win, I thought.
Correct. Just, just to make sure you're clear, Alan, but you said no businesses will get a cost. Again, there's three different pieces in this document you have. The first piece is the, is the fire billing, no business. The second piece in is fire marshal fees. That, obviously, the businessman or the homeowner will pay at that point in time.
Right.
So just make sure we're clear. There's three different pieces here.
Right.
Now, stay on that for a minute. How is that different than, where are the fees going to?
General fund.
The fire marshal collects. So, so this is basically like a building official fee. This is out of the fire marshal's office in town hall.
Plan review, exactly. Exactly. It mirrors exactly what the building permits, that building permit fees.
Now, Anthony, on the fire marshal fees-
Yep.
Because I remember that meeting I have, God bless, I happened to attend. They have to do quite a bit of field work.
Right.
And it didn't seem to me like they were really getting enough for the fee, for the amount of work being put into it.
Well, I, I think it's better, there's nothing in place, obviously, now. So this at least, you know, gets the process in place. Again, this is comparable to other towns. We researched, and this is a compilation of the effort of many other communities in Connecticut that have fire marshal fees already.
And it's good for a year.
We're talking, you're talking the burning permit fee.
Right.
Some of these, these are plan reviews, things like that. The one, the component you're talking about is, is the burning permit fee, exactly. That's a, a twelve-month permit.
I believe they- Definitely.
Open burning permit, yeah, $25, 12 months.
Yeah.
What happens is, if you choose to want, you want to burn some brush at your house, the fire marshal's office, the fire marshal or the deputy has to come to your property to make sure you're not burning anything illegal. They take a picture.
Right.
They make a form up here, it's sent to the police station. The day you want to burn, you have to call the police station, say, "Hi, I'm Anthony. I have a permit. This is my house number." They check the file, "Could we do have a permit from you?" Make sure that the weather service has not put it as a red flag day.
Right.
And then they allow the person to burn.
Right.
So, there is a lot of, a lot of steps in the process and for $25 a year, really, there, a lot of folks have, are regular burners. There are some people that like to, you know, clear their property or burn brush on a regular basis and they're coming down every year, you know, multiple times to get a permit. So, it would be a one-stop shopping for a 12-month permit, pretty reasonable, $25. I could certainly send these off to John to have him, pretty him up, I guess you'd say, or legalism or whatever term you want to use.
So, do we not want to schedule the public hearing for the next meeting until John has a chance to look at them and then we'll...
That's my feeling. I'm looking for John's concurrence with this.
Yeah, I agree with that. Because the public hearing is really, as you say, to pretty them up. Somebody may have a, may have a comment about the amounts or something like that, but I would, I would not want to have a discussion of, or answer questions about the substance, the legal substance of it in that public hearing. So, I, if you could kick it over to...
Seventeen.
Yeah, well, the public hearing...
Would be in July then.
Yeah, I'll have a response at the next, for the next meeting.
Yeah, right, for 17. Kick it to July's 8th meeting.
That's fine.
All right, so what's on? All right, we don't need a motion to send it to John.
Do you want to send them, do that for both of them then? For both of the ordinances?
I think the other one's pretty straightforward. It's, we've had that before, but I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to look at it. You are going to coordinate the public hearings on the same night anyway.
The numbering of buildings.
So, I'll be happy to look at that as well.
Okay. So, H and I will go to John's office for review. Item J.
Hang on just a second. I got a question on the tents here, the tent permit.
Yes.
And it says under the State Fire Safety Code, it's 401 people require it. So, is that, if you have a tent with 400 people, you don't need a permit?
I would defer to the fire marshal. I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
I, I'd be lying too.
Such a big tent. That is a big tent.
I'd probably infer it's the size of the tent. The size of the tent may be basically number 401. 400 is good. Or you just say extra large.
400 would be sufficient.
Exactly. All right. Item J, Animal Shelter Options.
Yeah, unfortunately, I thought I'd have more to report, but nothing, nothing new at this point.
Would it be possible to amend the agenda quick? I just wanted to add one thing about C-MED, which has just popped up.
When we amend the agenda to include an item on C-MED? So, 13C, is that, we're putting it under new business?
Yeah.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Pacey?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Item 13, New Business Discussion in Action. A, Approval of Revised Job Description for a Town Planner.
It was sent to us P.A. anyway. Right.
Do you have copies of that?
I got it on my email.
If I can make copies for those of you who just want to hold.
All right. Well, you know what, while you're doing...
I need those copies.
Item.
I do.
I got it on my phone.
While Anthony's making copies, why don't slide down to B. Consideration of 45 Clear Lake Road, North Bramford.
Yeah, this is the property mentioned. You know, the owner wants to donate to the town. There are no prescriptions on there. There was some information in a file that they had, the Inland Wetlands, or I guess, yeah, the Inland Wetlands had done an actual site review or field walk, I guess, back in April 2013 to, you know, ascertain whether or not, I guess, they could, you know, locate a building outside of the boundaries. And it appears that they have a health letter or a letter in here that indicates that they had an East Shore Health District sign off on that as well. When I, I had Fran, Fran, you know, went out there to take a look at it, both looked at it, you know, postage stamp size type of lot, but...
I mean, have they ever actively tried to sell this, that you know of?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's what this is, was all about and I'm not sure that maybe, I think the issue might have been that they were trying, were trying for, you know, a three-bedroom and, you know, a backyard with, you know, two, you know, approach on, you know, the, the wetlands area. So, even though the soil, I guess the soil letter says that you could, could have three, four bedrooms. And I think, I think the issue to me, if you, if you drive and you look at it and you think, if I put the house on this lot, I've got nothing but house on the lot.
Well, the thing is, I got just one question. It might be stupid, but what are we going to do with this?
We're collecting 2508 in tax.
Right. What are we going to do with this piece of land?
You could, you could decide to do nothing. I mean, I guess one of the options...
Well, that's what I mean.
If you look, if the overlay, you see the wetlands there, it's, you know...
But that's what I'm saying. What are we going to do with this piece of land?
You could, you could, you could try and just, you could take it and try to sell it.
But why should we get involved?
Right, I agree.
You know what I'm saying?
Well, the thing is, we're getting the taxes now and if we, if we take the lot and we can't sell it to anybody, now we can't sell a lot and we're not getting taxes.
Right, we're cutting our nose off to spite our face is what we're doing.
I would accept it.
That's the, right, that's exactly, that's the risk. If you were to take possession of it and try to flip it.
We're not in the real estate business, sir.
Right. And flip it for taxes, you just wait, you know, somebody builds on it, somebody builds on it. Not, you, taxable lot.
We're not in the real estate business, I mean. I mean, I might want to buy it for a dollar.
I'm going to up the offer to two.
See? I told you.
Is it wet enough for you to make an island out of it?
Put a little motor in it?
You could put a gazebo on it.
All right, so...
Houseboat gazebo.
I guess the consensus is...
I don't see why we should lose tax dollars and take a headache off somebody else's hands.
This thing is a developmental nightmare.
Right.
Or it would become before us.
Right. All right, so do we need to...
Next.
Thank you, but no thank you.
Let's send them a letter.
Send them a letter.
Thank you very much.
Fine.
All right, going back to item A, Approval of Revised Job Description for a Town Planner.
Yeah, it's really the...
Can you tell us what the difference, what you made changes?
It's on page two, under qualifications, in italics. Basically, from, you know, a recognized college to accredited college and then the issue of master's degree in planning or related field is preferred and American Institute of Certified Planners certification is desired. And then the, you know, the town will consider equivalent combinations of education, experience, and training and regulation enforcement, which provide a demonstrated ability to perform the duties of the position. So, that's the only tweaking or change that, that I wanted to see. And it was really more on the, you know, master's level certified planners, you know, somebody that, that has the credentials that you want for this job.
But according to this, you don't necessarily need those if you have the experience and years of whatever, because you said...
Well, the town could consider that. If, if, if somebody had been on the job, didn't get their certification, we prefer that, but if they had 20 years and, you know, great track record, you'd look at that, consider that.
It says the town will consider equivalent education.
Right.
So, that means if someone comes before you with that information and that background, it would, they would be considered.
Yeah.
Pretty fucking dry.
Don't we have to lift 20 pounds now? I thought that used to be 50. We're getting weak as a race.
I think we should up that to 30.
I'll be ready to walk over rough terrain.
Rough terrain, yeah.
Does that look acceptable?
Yes.
Do you need a motion for us to pass it?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion. Okay, I make a motion to approve the proposed changes in the job description for planning and zoning administrator, town planner, as presented.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, I believe seconded by Councilor Caprio. Roll call.
Mozaal.
Oh, is that, I'm sorry. Council Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Pacey?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Item C, thank you for amending this. This is in regards to C-MED and most of you were on the council when we had started talking about regionalizing with C-MED. I don't know if you read the paper or what's happening, but two towns, major towns, have pulled out of C-MED. And there's a lot of changes happening. It looks like, you know, C-MED may be going down. They called an emergency meeting for this Thursday. Darryl Anglerski, First Select Woman of Bethany. I sent it to Michael today. I got it, I don't remember what time today, and they already put together kind of an RFP, which I also sent to John. And I apologize, but I'll get it all to you tomorrow. I think also our fire chief needs to be involved with this.
Yeah. We're both available to attend.
Okay, great. And I wasn't sure if the police chief needed to be involved at all with this dispatch or is this, I know it's more on the medical fire side of things.
Right. That's what my understanding, I, I mean...
But he's in charge of dispatch though, isn't he, the chief?
Yeah, and I just, you know, wasn't sure of that. But, you know, some of my concerns, you know, we've been paying into this. And Anthony, what do we pay? I forget, Anthony.
About $25 a year.
$25,000. So, this could affect our budget greatly. But there are some options, I believe, going with North Haven.
I think that Haven did an RFP for, for two companions, it was a paper about Long ago, as an alternative to C-MED. So, hang on, that plays out and I think that we can go down and join with those folks. I guess the, the argument is also that as the increase in technology, do you need a C-MED at all?
Yeah.
Being one-on-one with the hospital.
Right.
You do need some kind of coordination from a practical perspective, but, you know, with C-MED, the right way to solve the problem, I guess, that's, that's what the...
Where, where is C-MED located now?
$200...
Right, it's a street in the basement.
Basement, homeowners.
And I guess my next question is, are they going to finish out the year? Like, we've already paid, you know, is there going to be any...
Well, it's interesting because, you know, as the article in the paper mentioned, about 48% of their revenue may go away.
Right.
And how can you, how can you function losing that much revenue?
Right.
So, what's going to happen as of July 1st? That's the mystery question. I guess what you guys will find out on Thursday, what's, what's their game plan? Do they have reserves to cover that they can, you know, eat out of their, like, fund balance, if you will? Are they going to fold?
Right.
I have no idea. So, it's very important.
Right. So, again, I'll get everybody that, I mean, I only got limited information on what's happening, but I just wanted everyone to be aware of it. It's pretty, I think, important, very serious. I mean, it's the communication from the ambulance ride to the hospital and, you know, we don't want any interruption in public safety, so...
Yeah, I would presume we just add that as a report item for a meeting on the 17th.
Okay, item 14, Citizen Statements and Petitions.
I'm going to go first. Are you a citizen?
Are you a petition?
Actually, I'm going to do it as a, as a counselor on the citizen statements. I want to apologize to Eric for biting his head off to first meeting. I might have taken out of context where you were going with your comments, but, you know, I, I'm very passionate about what I do up here. I take it seriously and in my tenure here, I've seen that when the council's involved in hiring administrators, I, I believe we come out better than we did. I could have told you that in a little calmer way.
I told him he wouldn't be comfortable here until you barked at him.
I actually thought it was going to be a lot worse than that. So, anyway. I thought I got off easy. No, no, of course.
I'm honored here and I appreciate you giving your time and, you know, I normally wait till the second meeting.
You have to listen to each other and go from there. No, no offense taken. I have a citizen. So, as you may know, I was very involved in our dog park creation and actually, we reached our first $10,000 milestone. So, when we passed the proposal, when we reached $10,000, that was, the town said that we would commit to move forward to finding an actual location and to kind of make it more official. And so, we've been working on, kind of starting with that. We're trying to figure out our next fundraising opportunity so that when we let people know that we've raised our thing, we'll be able to get to the next step for raising money. But I met with Pam Gary and with Fran and we're looking at, actually looking at different locations for a possible park to bring to Parks and Rec if they can get a meeting so that we can, we can move forward. It's really exciting.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I was about to say anything, but...
Eric also should be recognized, I forgot the Green Giant was here before me, for all his work at the Economic Development Commission Level 2. He's, he's really on fire for getting this town a few more bucks and a few happier business people. So, to give him credit, I mean, he doesn't give up and he's still there and I believe, George, did you have to step down or can you stay on that?
No, I had, I stepped down.
Okay, but while he was there, he gave it his all and really, you know, the charrette you saw, I mean, that, that Saturday afternoon with a little snowstorm pending, you know, the town really pulled together and came up with some good ideas. So, again, he was part of the, the push behind that. So, I don't think that should go unrecognized either. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you.
I feel like I'm an emotional roller coaster here, getting yelled at in one moment.
Welcome to the council.
Welcome to the council.
All as a volunteer.
All right. So, I have a motion to go into executive session with the town manager, town attorney.
And you'll, you'll need the...
And Anthony. And Anthony.
I second it.
Moved by Councilor...
Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Moved by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Pacey?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?